The Muscatine City Council in-depth session will come to order. Greg, would you perform a roll call, please?
Councilmember spread.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Shahadeh.
Present.
Natwick.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
And Lorette. Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Very good, Greg, thank you. Council, this is our last in-depth session of the year, so let's get going with it, okay? Item number two on tonight's agenda, request from Hines asking the city to sponsor an application under the High Quality Jobs Program and authorize mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Greg, would you explain a little bit?
Certainly, I am asking him for a motion tonight. The last paragraph in my memo is exactly what I'm looking for, but we have the opportunity tonight to support the Hines application under the High Quality Jobs Program with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Hines is looking to invest 24 and a half million dollars here locally in their plant in upgrades, and most of that is equipment. 106 new jobs would be created as part of this program, and there's a list of the investment that's being made here by H.J. Hines Company coming into the community. Our role in this is twofold: one, to support their application and have the mayor sign on behalf of the city of Muscatine in support of that application; and, two, to provide a local match under the scale that's listed in the memo, 75 percent down to 15 percent over five years, declining scale. That match is only required if there is an increase in property taxes, if there is increment generated. Assuming there is increment generated, the next steps for the city of Muscatine would be, one, to amend the urban renewal plan to include this project in that urban renewal plan, and then, two, to bring back a TIF agreement for the city council to act on. If you may recall that Hines is already in a TIF district, so we do not have to take that step, it's already taken care of. So those would be the next two steps. The application is before the Iowa Economic Development Authority next week, towards the end of next week, I believe it's Thursday or Friday, and that's when action will be taken on their application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions, council?
I just think it's a wonderful, wonderful project.
I'll make the motion, Greg, that we sponsor the Hines application under the High Quality Jobs Program and that we authorize the mayor to sign the application on behalf of the city.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Who did I hear?
Tom.
Tom, okay. And any additional discussion before we take the vote?
Mayor, I do have one question. When would the funding of this project start, and when will Muscatine see 106 new jobs?
I believe those details we'll find in the application as soon as it is presented to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. My understanding is this is going to kick off here very, very quickly. We do not have to submit, we do not have to do the urban renewal plan or the TIF agreement before the application is done, so I'll bring that back most likely in January to kick off that process, but it should be moving forward very quickly after next week's discussion.
I'm very, very impressed, 100 hourly, starting at $11.56 starting wage after 36 months, that's just incredible.
Anyone else, council?
I'll just make... Go ahead. A question, is the proposed TIF the only source of funding for the local match, or is GMCCI or anybody else involved?
As you can note on page two and on the attachments, you can do a tax abatement program. They are part of an enterprise zone. There is a specific schedule that's laid out in Iowa code, and that's what I've identified in the program. For us, it was simply, from my perspective, easier. We already have the TIF agreement, excuse me, the TIF district established. All we have to do is amend the urban renewal plan and put a pretty simple and straightforward agreement together. We could do an economic development grant or loan would be another option as well. But again, there is no local match if there is no increment generated or no increase in property taxes, because most of their investment is in equipment in the facility.
Right, okay.
Tom?
I will just make one observation here, despite if it's Hines or any corporation here in the community, when they expand, invest in our city, it's a win-win situation for the company as well as the community as a whole, so, thank you.
Thank you, council, for your comments. This is a simple voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Supposedly aye. Motion does carry. Okay, item number two, tonight's agenda, council, the presentation of a five-year airport capital improvements program and pre-application, and I believe Steve Bocca, you have the floor on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Set out the pre-application, I think, with the agenda materials to council, and I want to review this with you, because you'll recall, we did have a petrographic analysis done on the runway, which told us a number of different options for how to move forward with runway improvements, and by that I mean runway 624, the primary runway at the airport. It's 5,900 feet long, 100 feet wide. It is 20 years old, and we have had a number of blowups on that runway over the past several years, so the analysis gave us better information on what we may be able to do to correct and improve that situation. And a couple of the suggestions really involved making six-foot-wide cuts across the face of the runway at up to 26 locations, and installing expansion joint material, repaving, doweling in the paving, and then doing some crack sealing and some other things on the runway at a fairly decent expense for anywhere from three to eight years, depending on which we chose to do. However, with the runway already being 20 years old, which is the life expectancy of that, those pavements by the FAA, and the PCI that's done every three years down there, the pavement condition index indicates it's deteriorating, and the inspections indicate it's deteriorating to a point where if we make the investment, we're going to, in the patching, we're probably going to have patches that outlive the usefulness of the runway. And so we don't see that as a very good investment in the long term. In consultation with the FAA, they concur that probably the better option is to delay any of those temporary fixes in favor of complete replacement of the runway. Good news and bad news is if you replace it, you've got a brand-new runway, you're good for another 20 years, hopefully our blowups cease at that point. In the interim, however, we are proposing to let it go the way it is, and if we have blowups, react to them like we do now with emergency funding and try to get by rather than spend a significant amount of dollars and come back and tear it up anyway. So the plan you have before you kind of does a couple of different things. One is, we thought we might split that cost up over a two-year period. Frankly, it's going to take two years to do anyway, so if it's any easier for the city to meet their 10 percent share of this cost, which is 6 and 1/2 million dollars, so you're looking at $650,000 for this, it's not any small amount, but it's 10 percent of the total cost, you could do it over a two-year period. Or you could do it all, but it's still going to be a two-year project. So for the sake of laying this out, the pre-application gives you a budget that you can look at with the projects we have, and I'll remind you again that if it's a federal project, and these are all marked in here, whether it's federal or state assistance, federal projects are 90-10 split. It used to be 95-5, for those of you that recall that, but that changed, it's 90-10 now, and if it's a state, it's 85-15, local share. So you'll see the mixture of funding sources here. You can't piggyback them, they don't do that. Eligible projects are either geared toward the state funding or toward the federal funding. However, in fairness to it, we can get by if we want to make patches here. I just think we're going to continue to have difficulties. I did review this with the Airport Advisory Commission. Scott Natwick sits on that. I think he will agree that the group collectively felt that the repayment, replacement is best if we can afford to do it. So I'm here to answer questions on that. That's primarily what we have. This is a pre-application. It did have to go to the FAA today. We did send it in as you see it, but it's a pre-application, there's no obligation. If you folks feel differently tonight, I'll call them in the morning, and we'll generate another one, but we had to have it in today, and I had to get it in before I came to see you tonight. So this has already been sent in, doesn't mean you're locked in anything, because it's a pre-application, not even a formal application, but it kind of tells the FAA where we may be going with our projects, so they have, when they're putting their budgets together, they can see what we're proposing for the Muscatine Airport. Frankly, they support this, so... With that, if there are questions?
Steve, in addition to the FAA supporting it, and our local board, our consultant is consistent with that strategy too, right?
Yes, yes, they also support it. We thought about going the patching route and then delaying it for eight years, but we found out we were probably going to have significant problems with the runway because of its current condition within eight years. It's already reached its essential life of 20 years. No, there's still some life left in that pavement, I won't... It's not in terrible shape by any stretch, but it does have de-cracking, other cracks in the pavements that tell us it's starting to fail. And that's not starting to fail, it is failing, but it's not dangerous or anything, it's serviceable, it's just, it's time to consider this. If we do this, we're looking at an out year. We'll be looking at final plans, and you can see that on here in construction, really in FY '16 for the first half of that. So by the fall of '15, you would be looking at a project to start the paving work and completing it by '18 with this schedule, including the runway and the taxiway.
The other comment is we're kind of creating a reserve in advance of the actual...
Well, I misquoted, I misstated that to the Airport Advisory Commission. I thought we could build a reserve, well, we could build a reserve, because we have our allocation from the FAA of $150,000 discretionary funding for us to use in our projects. That can't be used as a local match for this big project, however. So that cost that you see, the 650, the 10 percent, truly is a city expenditure to get the 6 and 1/2 million dollar project. However, it frees it up to do some of the other projects you see on here, and we have a number of good projects that we can undertake, so...
Steve, if you decide just to go ahead and repair it, where would that money come from to pay for that?
Same thing, it would be done with a 90-10 share, and that's how we would proceed. We would have to put, change our application and go that route, and I think justify it to the FAA, who's already got the petrographic analysis and is also kind of on board, that it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend that money on a patch, but it is an option, and that's why I'm here.
You said the runway is 20 years old, is that just the newest part, the extension?
It's the, that's the life, that's the life of the, most of the runway, Phil. As you know, it was extended a number of years ago, but the...
I was thinking it was, in the 90s, mid-'90s, it was extended out to the 5,700 feet.
Yeah, it's 5,900 feet. I think it was 56, it went out another 300 feet or so, you know, but it, they classify it all as one PCI, and the PCI they're looking for is 85, and ours currently is at 70, and so it's not going to get any better, it's going to get worse.
Yeah, okay.
Steve, are you aware, does Hines have a corporate jet that they may, you know, in and out? I'm just kidding, anyway.
We can certainly attract them with a nicer runway.
Anyone else, council? Very good, thank you, Steve.
We will take that as concurrence to let this continue its course? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number four on the agenda is review and determine option for Carver's Corner, the Mississippi Drive corridor project, and I am thinking, Steve, you are also the presenter.
Thank you once again, Mayor. Tonight I do have Jeff Hilgans. Jeff is the project manager/lead engineer on the Mississippi Drive corridor project and has been involved in it since its inception, and we were at a point, and you'll, we'll go back a long way on this, it seems like, but where we presented a number of options for what we might do, what we refer to as a Carver corner, the Green Street and Hershey intersection, and I know at that time there were a number of council people that wanted to know when they would have their right to choose whichever one they wanted. Well, it's here. We're at the point now, we're getting ready to file our, a number of documents to receive, our environmental clearances, and one of those requires that we have a preferred option, or if we have one, that we list it. The list that we had from a range of the ones you saw earlier has really been, has been reduced to three different options. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, he'll go through those three options with you, and then both he and I are here to respond to questions as we go forward, so, Jeff.
Hi again, Jeff, and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me back again, it's nice to see you all. I've got these options here that I can pull up. Okay, the first option is actually two options. We call it Option 1C. As you can see, it's a realignment of Green Street coming north to basically cut at a 45-degree angle across that open area and across, well, some existing buildings there, and then curve into Hershey Avenue going east and then going northeast. Then what happens is, as the west leg of Hershey would come in and tee into this new intersection, which is created there, and then Green Street coming in from the north would tee into Hershey and not be part of that new intersection. What we were looking at with this option was, you know, the major movements going through town, right now, come east on, or west on Hershey, you have to take a left turn to go south and vice versa, people coming into town from the other direction have to take a right turn, so a lot of the major movements all have to turn at that intersection, so this was an attempt to remove all those turns and make the major movements through movements. So that's what, I guess, the major advantage of this option is. And then a variation of this option, which is...
Jeff, before you go move forward, you're referring to this option as 1C, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's what we called it in the EA document, and in our studies, we call this Option 1C. And then there's two variations of 1C, and it has to do with the intersection control of that T-intersection. The other variation we looked at was a three-legged roundabout at the intersection there. Just to show you how that would work, there are some safety advantages with the roundabout versus a T-intersection, and, you know, some advantages for moving traffic through there. So, but it does take up a little bit more space, and, you know, there's some give and take with whether, which of these options you would want to use, so... You want me to just go on to the next one, then we can have questions after?
Well, could I coerce you into making some sort of an identification for that roundabout option, like a 1...
R.
R, yeah.
We could.
How about a...
So council, let's call the roundabout 1R, okay? This is important. You could just call it the roundabout option, I guess. It's the only one left that's available for consideration, so, for tonight, that's what we can do. Okay, so the other one that we're looking at, we call it Option 1D, and that's fairly similar to what you have out there now. What we tried to do, though, is to line up the north and south approaches on Green Street so that we have a traditional four-legged intersection, and we don't have that offset that you have out there now, so that, so we swung the south leg over farther, a little bit farther east, so that it lined up with the Green Street, the north leg of Green Street going up the hill. That's a signalized intersection similar to what you have now, so that's Option 1D.
Would this one be signalized, I assume?
Yep, but the, we anticipate, and we haven't analyzed in depth, you know, whether or not a signal will be warranted, but the signal is there now, so basically, if there's already a signal there, a new intersection, you almost always would replace that signal then.
What about 1C?
1C, we'd have to look at signal warrants, because we're changing the operation of what the vehicles that are going through that intersection. It's no longer a four-legged intersection, now it's a three-legged intersection with a change in the way that movements go through the intersection, so we'd have to analyze that, but likely it would be signalized as well. That would be the assumption.
In terms of relative cost, is any one of these more attractive than the others?
In terms of what?
Relative cost.
Oh, well, relative cost, I mean typically the upfront costs, this intersection, the 1D, and the roundabout would probably be comparable, the other T-intersection might be a little bit cheaper, just by looking at the amount of pavement that you'd have to build. But oftentimes, with a roundabout intersection, you'll pay a premium for the paving, because it's got very specific grading requirements, and it's a little bit tougher to build in a circle as opposed to straight, and the contractors aren't as used to it, so you often would pay a premium there. We've done some costing, and there's not a huge difference between them, but I think there is a bit of a premium with the roundabout.
Which is the most efficient, specific to traffic flow?
The roundabout would be most efficient, moving traffic. We don't have particularly heavy traffic movements going through here, so a traffic signal, you always have to stop for a red light, and during most of the day, there's not a ton of traffic going through there, so you're going to have, you're going to have traffic stopping where there is no opposing traffic in a lot of cases, which isn't very efficient, so with a roundabout, you can just keep moving through, you yield at the yield line, and you go, and that's the most efficient way to move traffic for an intersection like this, where most of the time there isn't a lot of traffic.
But if you have Option 1C, which is on that page with the roundabout, considering the, I would suspect the amount of traffic that would be coming off of Hershey Avenue coming onto this, a simple stop sign would probably be more than adequate.
It may be, but you're talking about the T-intersection, yeah.
Correct.
And initially, that's what we would look at as a first, as a first analysis, is we would look at it as a stop on the minor leg, which would be Hershey coming in from the west, and see if that, see if it meets warrants for a signal, and then we would go to that next step if it requires signalization.
Do we have any traffic, existing traffic counts on Hershey?
We do.
Are they high?
No, not, I mean, not particularly. I think we're running at about, what, between 9,000 and 10,000 a day on Hershey going through there, which isn't particularly heavy, but depending on the types of movements, still may require a signal.
Is that the one?
And when they come through.
They're going from Mississippi Drive on out on Hershey, or they're 10,000, which direction are they coming or going?
Well, I don't recall exactly, but the movements tend to be heavier coming, you know, coming from the, to and from, to and from the, on the east leg, and then going to the south, would be heavier than traffic continuing west on Hershey.
That's what I, that's why the curve, we always thought about making that curve as straight as possible, and if you straightened it out, if you wanted to straighten it out 100 percent, you'd have to displace McKee Button and a few others, otherwise it's, I mean, if you didn't care what property you picked up, you could straighten that sucker out perfectly.
Right, you could just follow the rural grade, basically, through there, yeah.
Right, but I know, last time we talked, we talked about the other D, I guess it is, because we've done a lot of concrete work over to that corner already, and I thought council was under the idea that we were going to try to maintain as much concrete rather than tearing it back up again.
Yeah, that's one of the things to consider, is that whole stretch of the east-west road there has been recently reconstructed. You could salvage more of that pavement by going with Option 1D.
In other words, with the roundabout, you'd lose more of that.
Correct. With either the 1C, either 1C or the roundabout option, yeah, you'd have to, you'd lose some of that, up until the curve that goes to the northeast, basically.
But aligning that with Green Street would then make it a true T-intersection, which would make it easier to handle than what it, it's a disaster.
Yeah, operationally, it makes it much simpler, yeah. The other thing to consider, and it was all kind of covered in the study, is, you know, the potential for this area for redevelopment, and that's something to consider when you're thinking about this as well, the, either of the, what we call the sweeping curve options, this 1C or the roundabout, use up more space that might be used for development than what the 1D option does.
So we might get the white way redone, huh?
Other side of the street.
What you're saying, then, is that there would be a higher land acquisition cost to those two than 1D?
Very likely, yeah. We haven't done any analysis of land acquisition, but yeah, you'd be taking more land for roadway purposes, and there'd be less left over for development.
Of the three, the one that I like the least would be 1C, and I was, like Phil said the first time, I was kind of thinking, well, with all that new concrete, it'd be kind of foolish to consider the roundabout, but now, as I've learned more about roundabouts, I'm kind of swayed back that direction.
I like that option from an operational standpoint, I mean, that...
For long-term operation and efficiency. That's my opinion.
We've talked some about traffic counts, can you characterize, is our, are our traffic counts typically static, or are they increasing or declining? You know, I don't know what time horizon to put that over, but what would the trend be, you think?
For this area in particular, traffic counts have been relatively steady. For this area in particular, traffic counts have been relatively steady. In fact, I think they've, since the bypass has gone through, traffic counts have gone down.
That wouldn't be a surprise, yeah.
And we don't, you know, because this area is more or less fully developed, we might redevelop some areas, but the traffic counts, we don't anticipate that they'll change a whole lot in the future either.
It would make my decision easier if I knew what the actual traffic counts that were going on Mississippi. Mississippi Drive turns into Hershey, back a ways. I don't know where it is. At the Marina Business Tire Store, whatever, there's a new business there now. That's where Hershey Avenue actually starts. But the traffic count going out Hershey or coming in from Hershey and not making the bend down onto Grand View would be interesting. If there's a minimal amount of traffic involved using Hershey, which I think it is minimal, most of it is making the curb.
Yeah, it is. It is higher for the traffic that runs along the curb, yeah. I just don't have the numbers in front of me to know exactly what that is, what the difference is. But we can certainly get you those numbers, if you'd like to look at them further.
I'd say, except during Kinstein and Sockery events, then we get a lot of traffic on Hershey.
Right, well, that's true.
We get a significant amount going both directions on Hershey. I don't know, Steve, we've talked a little bit about this. I think our recommendation is actually 1D. I actually prefer the roundabout option that was taken off the table, and I believe it was taken off the table basically due to the steep grade on Green Street, if that's correct. So that one was taken off the table. 1D, from, I think from our perspective, simply provides, well, one, I like the realignment with Green Street, but two, it leaves a significant amount of property on the riverside available for redevelopment, rather than the other, I guess, Option 1C and 1R.
So you're leaving as much of the existing new concrete in place as possible.
Yeah, and I support exactly what Greg said. I think if you look at the 1D option, it leaves the bigger part of this available for redevelopment, if you want to do that kind of development work down there. This sloping road, or the cutoff, if you will, leaves you with remnant or orphan parcels that really don't lend themselves to really much development. So you've got this huge area of wasted property that's a struggle. The other thing I really kind of like about reorienting Green Street to the east a little bit, is that you have those houses that are now almost out on the street, on the highway there on the west side, would all of a sudden get a front yard, because the old highway would be gone, and the new highway would move over, and it would give it more of a residential feel for those folks that, right now, they step out their front door into the sidewalk and then into the street. So that would help give that separation there on 1D.
Can you bring that up?
And it would still be acceptable for the existing businesses on the west side of Green there, too.
Yeah. You'll see there, they're accommodating. Once that old pavement section's removed, because it's no longer necessary, that, in my judgment, would be something you'd look at probably transferring back to the adjacent property owner for them to take care of, and give them a little bit of yard. But look at what it does with the rest of the site to the east of that alignment. It leaves you a blank canvas for what you want to do in the future.
Who owns that?
There's two owners in there. North Beach and T-Strake are the owners of the real estate.
North Beach owns the Carver Corner, or is that the city?
No, we own the Carver Corner.
That's what I thought that was the situation.
The lumberyard.
The lumberyard, and then T-Strake is the feed.
Right, okay.
And there's plenty of other opportunities for roundabouts, Hershey and Hauser, or Mulberry and Hauser is a really good opportunity.
So you said that the roundabout was eliminated originally because of the steep grade at Green Street?
The other round...
Gee, talking about steep grade.
There was an Option 1A, which was a four-legged roundabout, which was not exactly in the position, the middle of the intersection was a little bit farther south than what you're seeing here in 1D. So it had a little bit of separation from that north leg, but the grade coming down green, there just wasn't enough room to make up that grade. And there was also some concern that the building that's on the northwest corner of the intersection would be impacted there to a great extent if we tried to implement that 1A.
Like somebody sliding into the side of it or something.
I think the research we've seen indicates it can do roundabouts up to roughly 9% grade, although IDOT disagrees with that percentage.
Up to 9% grade?
About a 9% grade. Depending on your expert that you use, the IDOT's Wisconsin expert will not agree with that. Our expert will disagree with that. But this is, you know, significant grade. But that was eliminated, and is no longer an option.
Correct.
Steve, I'd just like to say, being a member of the Fourth Ward, I've received quite a few phone calls, actually from the last full year. With this becoming part of the newspaper again very quickly and part of our agenda, the phones start lighting up again. These older people do not know how to maneuver through a roundabout, so they're scared. They feel their safety is being looked at, abused, et cetera, call it what you want. But when you now say that the roundabout is not being considered, people are probably applauding you for making that decision. And I want to commend the city for no roundabout, at least on Hershey.
Again, this is your turn to select a preferred option. If you have one, that's what we want to know, so it can be included in the documents. But I think, I speak for Greg and I, we like this option better than the other options. That's just our opinion. If you want it, there it is.
I would agree with you, 1D.
And counsel, we can move forward with some action tonight, or we can take it home and think about it until maybe next week.
Well, again, the one I like the least is 1C, and I can be convinced that 1D is, I can go with that, even though I like the roundabout concept. Maybe Greg's got a good point, that this isn't the ideal application.
And you can put that in the form of a motion, if you like.
Sure, I'll move that we adopt Option 1D, or recommend 1D.
As a preferred option.
As a preferred option, the one that's up here on the screen.
It's not necessarily a final decision, but it's a preferred option.
Excuse me, the one up on the screen is the T.
That's 1D.
That's 1D, yeah.
That's 1D, that's not T. That's a realigned intersection, so it's straight north and south of Green Street.
But there is no roundabout, right?
No. No roundabout, just what you say.
Good.
We have a motion, counsel.
Was there a motion?
There are seconds.
Second.
I seconded that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? And that motion carries.
Thank you for your time. We do have those counts, and I will tell you that the traffic counts, I'm doing by recollection, I've dropped off since the bypass was constructed. But the design standards that we're using for reconstruction of this corridor will accommodate traffic through 2020 with a three-lane. It's got plenty of potential for growth. We can reduce the lanes and use the three-lane even through the downtown area and still accommodate the projected traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Ten-foot trail.
Well, counsel, item five on the agenda is comments. Shall we begin with Phil?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Just a quick one. I'll be absent next week, and I think that's Councilman Lorette's last meeting, so I just want to commend him for his service. I think he was a very dedicated public servant and a commander.
Very good. Osama?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Bynum?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And Jeanette, I hope you didn't take offense by Councilman Bynum's comments about...
I was sitting here thinking about that.
Care to comment?
I think I've probably driven on them over in London, so, and that's tricky. And down in some of the southern states have them also, the roundabouts. Williams Marx Party.
By 45 on the 19th.
Okay.
Downstairs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. And Councilman Tom?
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Greg?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And I have nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Osama, meeting is adjourned.